Colonia.
How was Pittsburgh?
It was hot. The game was hot. The city, I mean, all cities awesome. Man, it was, I was dying.
Where did you stay at?
We stayed at the Hyatt Place, right? It's about a block from the stadium.
Oh.
Right downtown.
Oh.
Yeah.
I knew it must be hot. My brother called me this weekend.
Oh.
I know you like the hot weather, but I'm done because he was there. So I knew it must be hot.
Raiders.
I hate this one.
Almost see the Raiders, Raiders fans getting in a fight. I mean, they, they, they traveled. It was crazy. It was wild, man. Wild.
Life lessons for the boys, huh?
Yeah. Yeah.
At least he's some stuff.
Yeah. Yeah. It was smart. We drove home this morning instead of fighting traffic to get out of there last night. So I'm like, at about four o'clock on the road, dropped at Busware for school.
All right. It is now six thirty and I'm going to, oh, I don't think she's recording.
It's recording.
Oh, thank you. Okay. It didn't look like it. Sorry. Thanks. It is now six thirty. I'm going to call the pre-meeting to order, starting out with a roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Watson.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Present.
Commissioner Gao.
Present.
All commission members present.
At this time, I will turn it over to our city administrator, Greg Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first item is regarding the welcome sign medallions in the service club emblems that used to be on either side of the welcome sign on M fifty-two. For Gao says that we had this item to see if it's pre-meeting agenda. I know Matt has some information on that. I'll just kind of turn it over.
Thank you. Just pass that around. Had a couple of inquiries a week or so ago from service clubs basically saying, what happened to the signs when they were going back up? I called Matt and that said, we're kind of waiting for direction from the city commission. I think where it was left was we needed to make a decision how we were going to go about it. So I'm passing around right now is actually the list of the signs that were there when, when they were taken down. And we haven't talked to any of them per se, but we want to take a look at what was there and develop some thoughts or criteria about how an organization would qualify to have a sign up. Like I said, these are the ones with the only, only question being, does anybody know who T is? At the bottom of the.
He looks like, Chief looked like he is.
They had their, I don't, nobody here that we can identify knows what the P is, which may be fortuitous because there's sixteen organizations listed here and there's room for sixteen on, you know, on the sign. The, I say it's fortuitous because Adrian College is conspicuous by their absence on this. And of course, they were on the main signs when we took it down, but we didn't put any, any other schools or anything on there. So I'm, my guess is contacted the Adrian College would want to have a medallion up there as well. I, I met with Matt this morning. We talked about criteria and wanted to get the input here. First of all, if, you know, the thought is at this point that we reach out to the organizations, see if they wanted to go back up on the sign. New signs would be manufactured by the city or the city vendor. And Matt said that for a hundred dollars each, we could pay for the sign and the hanging of the sign, which sounds reasonable and I would think would be reasonable to just about any of the organizations here. So that's the first question that needs to answer is, is that an approach when they offered the signs? Signs would all be circular. They would all be twenty-four inches in diameter. So anybody have any comments on that?
Yes, my, my first thought is, is leave it as is. Don't put the medallions up.
Okay.
I think it's pretty sharp right now. It's got a clean look about it. I think, I mean, obviously something needs, there's some gaps there in the, in the structure. I, aside from picking and choosing, there's a lot of service clubs around town.
Sure.
And I think that's, that's a, a, a difficult road to walk because who's going to pick winners and losers? And are these, are these groups still relevant? Are they still the most? And, and that's not indicating anything towards any of them. Are they still relevant? Are they still, is it still important? What do you see at fifty miles an hour going by that sign? And, and you know, if you're, if you're a Rotarian or if you're a member of, you know, any of these organizations that are more than just Adrian locations, you're probably going to look up if they've got a local chapter on the internet rather than see it on the sign on the way in. So I, that's just my initial thought as I've looked at that sign a couple of times driving by. Let's just let it pop, Adrian.
Okay. That's reasonable.
I, you know, I've sent Matt and Greg an email about the sign. I drive by it every day, every morning and, and I think it looks awesome. It's clean. It's crisp. It pops the road. I have to agree with Commissioner Watson. For me personally, I just like the clean look of it. And, and when you start to get noisy, signage is one of the most important things in a business. And if we're trying to attract people, what, you can also get messy. And so I'm impressed with how it turned out. I'm really impressed, actually. I mean, it really stands out. So with some lighting and some a little bit of landscaping, I think that it's really going to show. But I agree with Commissioner Watson. I think it's, you know, my, me, me, me personally, I mean, picking and choosing and, and I'm sure there's more out there now that we want to be on it. So we choose all of these and then, you know, Brad's got a Domino's club. He wants to be on there because he thinks that's for example, right?
Yeah.
So I think, I love the clean look again, but I'll concede to the majority. I'm not going to debate it, but that's just how I feel about it.
Well, and that's what I wanted to find out because then leaving it plain is certainly an option. And frankly, it saves us from the difficult task of, of picking and choosing or, or developing a specific criteria that's applicable across the board. And we say, okay, you have, you know, you have to have three, these three different qualifications to get up there. It's a hard thing to do. So I know that people who have called and asked about are they going back up are going to be disappointed, but that's not, you know, that's not an issue.
We're not picking and choosing those.
Yeah, exactly. See, that's, yeah.
Adrian, Maple City.
And that's my concern. There, there's definitely others because I'm involved in one that's not on here. And there's that, that is the concern. There are many that are, there's more out there than when these went up the first time. And I'm very concerned about that as well with the picking and choosing. And I don't want one group to think that one's getting that recognition over the other. And I, we'd never want to be tasked with choosing one group over another.
Somebody had asked me when we walked in here tonight, who had signs up there in the past? I would just start guessing just because I grew up around here. I don't have any idea who had a sign up there. So in my mind, nobody was getting any benefit from those signs. I like the way it looks now. I like the way it looks. But again, I want to just bring it to the table here so that, I mean, I could have made that decision, but that's not the way the system works. So I want to make sure that everybody had an opportunity to express it. And if leaving it plain is the way to go, so be it. Okay.
That being said, it's sharp.
It's very sharp.
I really, really like it.
There you go. It is. It looks good. So Matt, that's all we've got to talk about. We will not be putting up the medallions anymore.
Good job on the sign, Matt.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can you hear us, Matt?
Really, really still.
Thank you, guys.
He's in shock.
I think you keep creeping up.
I want to turn the camera off.
He's. He's in frozen land. All right.
I don't have anything else.
We, first, we only side of a small amount of time for our discussion tonight, too. If you want to, if anyone has any other items or something.
Well, if we have time and Matt is able to speak, I know we just voted on a flashpad. Do we have a time frame for that?
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, now.
All right. So we're meeting with the contractor again next week and we're going to be starting construction in the spring. So we're going to be probably doing some prep work in the fall here, getting the, the water lines run. But we'll start actual construction on this splash pad early on in the spring.
And Matt, a question to that, that was asked of me in a meeting that I attended about a week and a half ago, when you gave me a PowerPoint there to present on the splash pad, is what you gave me in that, in that PowerPoint, is that exactly what it's going to look like? Or is there any leeway of moving any parts out? Or is that a set one? And there was just a little bit of concern about those rocks, but then somebody said they saw them at Splash Universe and they have water. But I'm just asking those questions because they were posed to me by the public and I didn't know them.
Yep. So that was one of the set, set pads that we had selected early on. And that's what it'll look like exactly to the T. There's not really any leeway we can use except for when we met with the contractor the first time. She did say there's some flexibility in the pieces itself. Over time, if pieces wear down, all we have to do is unsnap one piece and put a new fixture on. So we can, we can continuously change it, but we can't necessarily change the orientation of it.
Well, just to let you know, that group, it was a group that actually lives in that area and they were ecstatic by the fact that it's a very all-inclusive part splash pad with, with the wheelchair accessibility to all of the features. And they loved that part of it and the, and the big water feature in the middle. They, they were very happy and pleased with it. So I just wanted to give you that feedback as well.
Oh, great. Glad to hear that.
Then I have one more request of Matt, if that's okay. Can monopolize pickleball courts?
So we're gonna put them in temporarily this year. So they will just have lines on them. They won't have a surface. We're hoping to resurface that area in the spring as well and, and put a whole new, I guess, court in. When we met with the last contractor, I'm, I'm kind of getting conflicting stories from contractors. One said it would be completely fine. And then when we brought someone in to, to do the work, they said, you got to put a whole new surface on this. So we're getting conflicting stories, but the last guy we met with seems to know his stuff. And he said, let's just put some lines down this year so they have a court to play on. In the spring, let's hit it hard and give them a whole, a whole pickleball court complex.
Matt, share what they said about the fence like as well.
Oh, yeah. Good point. They mentioned that fencing is kind of a waste of money in their eyes. The pickleballs don't go very far. They'll hit concrete and then they'll pretty much stop after a little bit. They're pretty much wiffle balls. So they said, in their opinion, it would be better to save the money from the fence and use it on the surface.
Interesting. Okay. I think I'm done. Thanks. Thank you.
No problem.
No.
Is there any, any other?
Oh, I, I did have a question, Mr. Elliott. Noticed on your weekly report that you anticipate that the LDEX project will come back to us for additional discussion. You have any idea when that might occur?
Uh, yeah. Your first meeting in October, that that's the first thought to resolve.
Thank you.
Bearing no more things that want to be discussed, I'm going to move on to public comment. At this time, we will begin with public comment inside the pre-meeting room. And just to reiterate, there's a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address. After we're finished with public comment in the pre-meeting room, we will move on to Zoom. Is there any public comment in here? All right. We're moving to Zoom. Is there any public comment on Zoom?
Kent Oak Cars, one ten South Locust. Just a couple of things on the sign on the north side of town. I'm not, I'm not happy with the shade of blue. I don't think that's the Adrian blue that we're supposed to have. And I wish someone would look at that and make sure that that's the right blue. Also, I think it detracts from the city. I think that the sign quality is poor. I'm not happy with the seams on the sign. And I'm not happy with the screws that are visible when you're driving forty miles an hour past the sign. The other thing is, I don't know if anybody reviewed the meeting minutes from the other meetings, but at that meeting, you guys were asked to put Adrian Public Schools on the bottom of that sign. And I think at some point in time, it was agreed that it wasn't going to be done and that it would be put on the medallions. And now I kind of feel like you guys are changing, you know, after something's been kind of approved or talked about, now you're saying you're not going to put medallions up where I'm wondering if there would have been, you know, more public outcry from some of the people from the schools to put Adrian Public Schools on the bottom of the sign like you guys had originally talked about. So that's it with the signs. The other thing, I had sent all you guys an email. The county is proposing to put a building up, an activities center in Tecumseh. And I think you guys should be appalled and that you should write a letter opposing this. And my reasoning is the county and the county seat, you guys asked them to spend a couple of dollars on a Christmas tree and they couldn't even do that. And now they're going to spend millions of dollars or hundreds of thousands of dollars to put an activities center in Tecumseh, which is in the northeast part of the county. Not in, it, it should be, the county seat is centrally located and some of you might not know this, but you're actually in the county seat. If you look at someone who lives in Hudson, now they would have to drive almost forty-three minutes to get to that location. So again, I'm asking you at the meeting to send a letter or to at least reach out to the county commissioners and ask them not to put the activities center there, to put it somewhere in the city of Adrian.
Bearing no more public comment, may I get a motion to adjourn?
Who's adjourned?
For.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned and our regular meeting will begin at seven PM. I mean. I call to order the Adrian City Commission meeting for September twentieth, two thousand and twenty-one. If everyone would please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where wishes stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hou.
Present.
Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer.
Present.
Commissioner Castleberry. Commissioner Gao.
Present.
All commission members present.
And from communications, C one finance is our July revenue and expenditure report. Are there any questions or comments, commissioners, on that? So moving on, we do have a proclamation. It is for Hispanic Heritage Month and I will not keep presenting it because I've actually already presented it, but I did want to publicly do the proclamation as well. On September sixteenth, a large group of people joined me behind City Hall as we acknowledged Hispanic Heritage Month and presented the proclamation. But I would like to also read that publicly tonight as well. Whereas in September nineteen sixty-eight, Congress authorized Lyndon B. Johnson to proclaim Hispanic Heritage Week. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, the observance was expanded to a month-long event, which begins each year on September fifteenth, the anniversary of independence of five Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. And whereas Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September sixteenth and September eighteenth respectively. And whereas Hispanic Americans are a spirited culture with a growing influence in the arts, sciences, business and government, and recognized in the Adrian commit, community as well as the state for their leadership and participation. And whereas Hispanic people have long played an important role in the history of the city of Adrian and have equally contributed to the strength of the nation as a whole. And whereas migrant farm workers are a crucial part of our local economy and their contributions to our community are recognized and valued. And whereas the Hispanic community contributions to the standard of life in the city of Adrian merit this occasion. And it is hoped that this celebration will instill unity, a sense of community pride and togetherness in our citizens. Now therefore I, Angela Sore Heath, mayor of the city of Adrian, do hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one as Hispanic Heritage Month and call upon all local businesses, clubs and community members to effectively utilize Hispanic human resources and to work in partnership with the Hispanic community for the advantage it will bring to all involved. Now moving on to our consent agenda, may I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Hou with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gao.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Motion to approve the consent agenda is approved by an all yes vote.
May I get a motion to amend the agenda to strike resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and fifty-five and to amend the agenda and related resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and fifty-six to read one thirty-three, one fifty-five and two oh-five North Winter Street, not North Main Street.
So move.
Support.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Watson. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gao.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
The motion to amend the agenda to strike R twenty-one, one fifty-five and to amend the agenda and related resolution R twenty-one dash one fifty-six to read one thirty-three, one fifty-five and two oh-five Winter Street is approved by an all yes vote.
Moving on to the regular agenda, resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and fifty-four is from utilities. It is a resolution to award a bid for surface wash pumps. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Second, Castleberry.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gao.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by an all yes vote.
Resolution R twenty-one dash one hundred and fifty-six is from administration. It is a resolution to defer brownfield redevelopment activities to the Lenawee County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority for one thirty-three, one fifty-five and two oh-five Winter Street. May I get a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution.
Support.
Are there any public comments? I have a motion, oh, sorry. Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Castleberry.
Yes.
Commissioner Gao.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hou.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by an all yes vote.
Commissioners, in your packet, there are miscellaneous reports. Are there any questions or comments on those reports? Bearing none, we are now going to move on to public comment. We will begin public comment in person first. So if you are on Zoom, I will let you know when we are finished with public comment in person. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Hi, Greg Adams, two oh four North McKenzie, Adrian. The E race is coming up this Sunday at nine AM. We're looking at over about six hundred people to be registered. So it's going to be a pretty big crowd. I just noticed, no, no, today, I always like to talk about community. I noticed today, driving, the ISD has a big, the big computer sign shows the E race. And I noticed that the M dot is the E race over there, too. And we have a county lawn sign for the E race. You have a county city team, a county team. It really just shows how the community has really grown and embraced our race. And it's something that's really special, I think. We'd love to have you there. Pre-registration, well, not pre-registration is open at eight for a pack of pickup and the race starts at nine. I have the, oh, we just literally received today that sixty APS kids are coming to the race, too, for the elementary level. So if you've ever seen sixty elementary kids take off from the starting line, it's pretty fun to see. It's always nice. So I think we had more kids at the kids' dash than most races in the county have their whole race. So it's going to be a fun day and I hope to see y'all there.
Will Garcia, seven oh four Comstock Street. I'm encouraged that the mayor and members of the commission have been in discussions with neighboring communities to create solutions to blight. However, I have concerns about the applicability of the Y and dot model of inspections at point of sale to owner occupied housing in Adrian and cannot recommend it as currently discussed. To begin with something that seems obvious, blight is not fixed until a parcel is repaired. All of the inspections, code enforcement actions, infractions, fines and litigation that are undertaken in blight remediation efforts exist in theory to create an incentive structure that coerces the owner of a parcel to make the desired improvements. This model can only solve blight when the owner of a parcel has the resources and ability to make the necessary repairs. In rental housing, this is absolutely the case. Landlords almost unanimously run at a profit in giving them the financial resources to match the legal and ethical responsibility to ensure that their housing is safe and compliant. However, this is not the case for owner occupied housing, particularly in Adrian. According to the United Way, three in five residents in Adrian do not make enough money to make ends meet. This inspection model may work for. This inspection model may work for, uh, this inspection model may work for Y and dot, a community where the average household earns twenty-three thousand dollars more per year than Adrian, but it's unlikely to work in a community where a majority of residents cannot afford necessities like food, gas, and utilities, much less expensive home repairs. As mentioned, blight is only resolved when the tools come out and the parcel gets fixed. Tasking Adrian buyers and sellers of distressed properties, individuals who are often living paycheck to paycheck and are likely to have put all of their resources into the cost of closing or moving to front the bill for these repairs is unlikely to result in repaired parcels. If the money isn't there, the work won't get done. And if the work doesn't get done, we didn't fix blight. While I understand that the commission has looked to ameliorate this concern through the proposed blight coordinator position by connecting people to resources, it's impossible to connect people to resources that don't exist. Area nonprofits do the best that they can with limited resources, but simply do not have the means to address this problem at the scale that we require. To this end, I implore the city commission to create a grant program to assist low-to-moderate income homeowners and homebuyers with repairs. I also implore the commission to focus new blight enforcement initiatives on commercial and rental parcels in which the owners have the means to make the necessary repairs. Thank you. I yield my time.
Don Taylor, four seven five Meadowbrook Drive. On behalf of the Art-Licious Planning Committee, I want to thank the, uh, city of Adrian for your support this year, especially, it was great to see Commissioner Roberts spending her money. Commissioner Gau's walking around downtown. Mayor Heath greeting visitors and also spelling off one of our artists so she could take a break and, and taking care of her booth during that time. And Commissioner Strayer, who returned to the streets and exhibited this year. Lad, it was great to see you. I hope I didn't twist your arm too much, but it was really great. In particular, I want to thank City Administrator Elliot, Matt Tomaszewski, our Director of Parks and Engineering Services, Eric Kelly and his crew at DPW, Jason Lawrence and his crew at the Parks Department. Special thanks to City Clerk, I know she'll be mad at me, Robin Connor and Fire Chief Eric Massengill, who worked closely with me and our food vendors to make it possible for us to have a very successful food court this year. Thanks also to Robin and City Tax Assessor, Kristen Brown, for covering our information booth on Saturday afternoon. We appreciate that. And I want to extend my sincere, and the committee's sincere thanks and appreciation, appreciation to Michelle Dewey for everything she did for us this year. She was of enormous help and is deeply committed to the city, especially our downtown and the events we hold there. I also want to thank our artists, our nonprofit organizations, our on-street, on-street entertainers, all of them from Lenaway County, our food vendors, the Adrian District Library, our partner for the last fourteen years, Plainway Instruments and their wonderful exhibit of their telescope, My Adventure Theater, the Adrian Center for the Arts and Hospice of Lenaway for their Power of Passage exhibit, Dr. Peter Barr from Sienna Heights, who led our Historic Home Tour, Barrett Smith Nursery, Lenaway County and, and Lenaway County Event and Fairgrounds for their exhibits, Dusty Steel and the D D A, Justin Gibber, Visit Lenaway, and David Thomas of Blues and Roots sponsoring the Saturday night evening concert by the Phoenix Theory Band. If you were there downtown, it was rocking, I'll tell you. And of course, our committee members and volunteers. Finally, our sponsors, I want to thank Visit Lenaway and Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs, who are our lead sponsors. We raise funds from all over the place. We don't ask the city for any money, but you give us great support. We appreciate that. We could not do without our sponsors, especially our local citizens and people came from afar and out of state for attending. I think this was probably our busiest Saturday ever. It's an honor for us to showcase the arts in our fabulous historic downtown. Next year is our fifteenth anniversary. Stay tuned for some exciting changes as we plan for that milestone. Finally, I want to thank somebody very special to me, my wife and best friend Sharon, for her support, encouragement, and hard work. She walks a walk, she talks a talk. Love you to the moon and back. Thank you.
Casey White, resident of Madison Township. But I'm here as a representative of many homebuyers and sellers in the city of Adrian to talk about the point-of-sale inspection. My experience, uh, with different communities, point-of-sale inspections, leads me to the following statements and questions that I would ask you all to consider when discussing this potential program. The answer to blight is not a point-of-sale inspection. Rather, it's to enforce the programs that we already have in place now and utilize them to their fullest potential, such as the rental inspection program. Blight is a poverty issue, so unless you are changing the incomes of the residents in Adrian, this will not solve it. Another option, as William mentioned, uh, is a grant program to assist homeowners to bring their home conditions to the city standards. Commissioner Hou mentioned in the special meeting, you bought a home that had been a rental for ten years and not had a rental inspection. Shame on the city of Adrian for not enforcing a program that they, that they have. Um, I would hate to see a point-of-sale inspection fall into that same category. The Everett Home Cellar in Adrian is not going to have the additional funds to cover the inspection costs, re-inspection costs, permits, and contractors to make these repairs. A lot of lenders will not be able to fund the loan. There's a lot of loan programs out there where it's not going to be able to close until these repairs are done, even if the buyer has funds to escrow. They usually have to escrow more. Is the city capable of holding on to this escrow account? Have you thought of those things? Um, you know, what's, what's the cost going to be? How many inspectors are you going to have to have? A different one for electrical, one for plumbing? The time constraints. I, I mean, I, the list goes on and on. I have quite a few questions in here. So just before implementing, introducing new programs, let's consider utilizing the ones that we have on hand. And I'm happy to talk to anyone, um, I've talked to several. So about the different programs that I have seen out there and the different issues that they have caused. So, thank you.
Hearing no more public comment for in-person, I will now open it up on Zoom. Just to reiterate, there's still a three-minute time limit. You should see that on your screen. And please, for the record, state your name and address.
Uh, Kent O'Car is one ten South Locust. I did some research I want to share. Um, I did reach out to the former Y and dot and I believe Brownstown Planning Director. He said good things about the program. Uh, but he also said that the success of the program was that they used part-time and third-party inspectors. You guys don't use that, so I think that's gonna be a problem, um, because you do that all in-house. The other thing that he mentioned, um, was that it takes time to do this. And it seems like, just going back to the previous person, you guys are just getting this blight thing. Let's get blight taken care of and then move on to start putting just general issues on people to sell their properties. Let's, you guys are trying to tackle a little bit too much, and I wish you would hold off on that. Um, in regards to RFQ for the pool, um, I did read through the RFQ. It does call in there, and I want, would like you to actually do some research and have Greg put information together beforehand. But in RFQ, they ask to find out how much money the city is gonna make from the pools. I, I support a pool, but I don't support a pool for Madison Township or Adrian Township or surrounding communities, not when we're spending four million on it. I wish that you guys would figure out something else. Adrian Public Schools did not build a twelve-lane pool because they didn't have the students to support a twelve-lane pool. That's why they stuck with the eight. One of the commissioners did go out to Napoleon. Um, I reached out to Napoleon. Housing values in Napoleon are three times that of Adrian. In addition to that, the median income is almost double that of a resident in Adrian. So, I mean, to say, oh, you know, they're a smaller community and they did it, we can do it. I, I don't think you can look at it that way. Yes, they have more expensive houses and they get more income. So yes, they can probably do that. That's not the case with Adrian. And if you want, take a look at the Atlas Report and then tell me how we can afford to pay for a pool for the county.
Hearing no more public comment, are there any commissioner comments? Commissioner Roberts?
So I had the opportunity to attend Saturday's Art-Elicious and was there for a good four to five hours. And, uh, Don Taylor, you acknowledged everyone else, but I'd like to acknowledge you for continuing to do this. I know, just like Robin, you're gonna hate it, but you take it, so. Thank you. Thank you for bringing all these beautiful artists to town and all of the people that came in. I happened to walk in behind three well-heeled women. And as you know, when you walk around in exhibits, you kind of follow the same people if you're going in the same direction. And so I, I overheard, they were from Celine in Ann Arbor. And it was so nice to hear them talk about the art that we had and the downtown and the exhibits. And so thank you for bringing people to our town.
Thank you.
I would just like to also acknowledge Julie Kane and our Lenaway Broadcasting. There is an amazing event going on. If you haven't noticed, there's a lot of cars here tonight. Um, and it's because they're at the Croswell right now, but there are broadcasters from all over the country and even, um, other parts of the world as well. I did meet some people from American Samoa and some other places like that last night. But they all arrived here last night, and we are hosting all of these broadcasters here in Adrian. It's their, it's their annual meeting that they do here, and it's just very exciting. I will say that they had nothing but great things to say about. They can see the progress, and they have never been here before. But they just said that they could see that a lot of our, our businesses in our downtown and was just turning for the better. And they said they're coming from areas where their downtowns are dying and ours is thriving. And they were very excited to see that. So it was just really good to hear that, and we finally have enough hotels to host. I guess that's why we never have hosted in the past. So that's also a great thing, that we, um, do have enough accommodations for them. But they were at the Adrian Center for the Arts last night. Tonight, they're at the Croswell. And I'm not sure where they're at tomorrow. It ends, um, I think Wednesday, um, halfway through the day. But it was just really great to hear everyone's take on Adrian and just hear the great things that they had to say. And they, they said that we're, we're going places, and they are very excited. And they hope to come back and see the progress that has happened here. But, um, if you see them out and about, there's many of them. They're in our restaurants and our hotels, and they're, they're wandering around our, our city this week. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, and, um, thank you to Julie Kane for bringing them here. May I get a motion to adjourn? I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Castleberry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.